Ladies and gentlemen, on a nice warm Monday night, welcome to our Town of Commission's Regular Board Meeting. Got a lot of, a lot of things on the agenda tonight, but let's kick it off with, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Stand, please stand for the invocation, we maintain good faith.
Oh my God, we are grateful for your presence here this evening. We thank you for your sovereignty. Even before you formed the earth and the world, from everlasting to everlasting, you alone are God. And we thank you, we're especially grateful, oh Lord, for how in the midst of all of our difficulties in life and our endeavors, we are. And so we ask, Lord, that you would forgive us once again, as we stand in your presence looking for your guidance. We are always especially grateful for our mayor, Bellflower, and his family. Thank you, Lord, for how you have launched him now into this calling, this ministry, and this leadership. And we pray, God, that you would wrap your loving arms around him and his family and protect him, God, and encourage him, strengthen him. Not only him, God, but the rest of the board members. We thank you for their commitment. We thank you for those that live here in the town of Hope Mills and what they've committed and what they've donated, God, that this town would continue to thrive and grow. We thank you for your protection. And Lord, we could not do anything if we did not have our first responders. We thank you for them, and God, we ask, God, that you would have your roaring angels behind their backs. Not everybody, hey, the police and first responders, I know that you don't. And so, God, we, we just thank you for them and their willingness to serve and protect and defend the people of Hope Mills and in the state of North Carolina. Lord, tonight, as we begin, the agenda has already been set, and we ask, God, for your guidance, your wisdom, help us to respect one another, oh Lord, and understand the things that you're trying to do to the best of our ability. And now, Lord, we commit this meeting into your hands, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to ask, folks, 10:06:30, Bus Commander Jim Morris to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, along with any other VFW members that are here.
Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda additions or deletions. Does the board have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor Bellflower, uh, no, uh, I would like to change for official comments, their official comments, I would like to change their manager's report to item A and the board members' comments to item B.
Okay, we've got a motion to change the manager's report to item A and board members' comments to item B. We have second discussion. Going forward, board, I would, I would say, let's make this a permanent change to the agenda in future meetings, if that's okay. All in favor? Anyone votes, motion carries.
Just to be clear, is that, was that a motion to switch it for tonight or for going forward?
Going forward. Yeah, going forward. We're gonna do it well tonight and going forward. Okay, with that motion, then we'll turn it over to Chancellor McLaughlin for the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Bellflower. Um, if you look in, if you have a copy of the manager's report, um, on the first page, we have the community corner. There's several upcoming events that are coming up. We have the trucks and stuff, stuff event on May 4th at the Goffe Greenway. Um, that's being put on by Parks and Rec Department. Um, also on May 4th, we have a free produce distribution. Uh, be here right at Hope Mills, um, parking, the back parking lot. This is a partnership with Second Office Food Bank where we're actually providing free produce to the citizens of Hope Mills at no charge. Um, we are actually also partnering with the Arms House, and we're asking anybody that can to bring small, non-perishable items like Juicy Juices and things of that nature. That'll be in support of the Arms House Kids Assistance Program. This event will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Um, May the 11th, you have the Bike Rodeo by Hope Mills Police Department. On June 15th, we'll be having our inaugural Juneteenth event. Town of Hope Mills is having Juneteenth in conjunction with Dirtbag L's. Um, at Dirtbag L's at 5435 Corporation Drive, June 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Um, in terms of Hope Mills projects, um, Heritage Park is still under construction. Uh, we have actual images of the huge dam gate being relocated. Um, our Public Works Department will be preparing to lower the lake levels for inspection by Snob Engineering to be scheduled the week of May the 5th. Uh, this will provide the opportunity to observe Wears 1 and 2 in the dry state. Um, also, we're permitting, they will also pressure wash and test the section of wear one that's been covered with, um, grouting for observation. Um, there's also a major program we're unveiling with the police department. Um, this called, it's a mental health program called Employee Resilience Program. Um, as law enforcement officers face unique mental health challenges due to stressful and potentially traumatic nature of their work, the implementation of this comprehensive mental health protocol can help support our officers' psychological well-being. Not only are we actually unveiling this soon with police departments, I'm trying to actually work with HR to expand that timeline for all three of you. Um, and speaking of HR, I would like to, um, recognize our new star on the Town of Hope Mills staff, Mrs. Leanne Koichi, um, in the rear. She's our new HR director. Um, she has come on board in the last few weeks, and she's hit the ground running. Uh, she submitted a new maternity leave program, um, to me already. Um, we're actually doing an employee survey to expand our, um, benefits packages, and so this mental health program will be rolled into that as well. Um, and finally, in terms of Hope Mills projects, Chipotle has contacted us. They have been approved officially. Uh, it'll be at, uh, Traymore Village. The plans are in the manager's report. Um, we have approved Phase 6 of Sheffield Farms for a total of 71 single-family residential lots. And the Mavis Tires off of Legion Row is officially open. Uh, and in conclusion, the NC DOT construction updates are, will always remain on the last page of the manager's report for the foreseeable future. Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, just real quick, just to reiterate from, um, we had talked at the Coalition of Coalition. Someone had had a question about the, um, the last pad. I, there is a mark of. What, what, no later than date, please?
Say, um, no later than date.
It's only last day that it will be open.
Well, okay, so I think, I wanna say, um, we opened, we opened the, um, the lake and the swimming pools around Town Open, let's say, the morning that we came. So, that's what we're shooting for. Um, we on the last leg, actually, of it. Um, we're, we're actually doing what's called Record As-Bill Documents. Kind of going a little bit back and forth with BWC, but we at the very, very last stage of that. Where once they approve the as-bill documents to, um, verify that everything's been put in the way the engineers say it should be, and they certify with their seal, then it could get me sealed except for the sanitary sewer. So, sanitary sewer in there except is, is the last piece of the puzzle. Everything else is complete and installed. Yes, absolutely, it's something, yep.
Okay, any other questions? That's a, that's a big one. A lot of folks are talking about it. Okay, let's start off with our board comments. Uh, Commissioner Scott, continue on.
It is great to see so many people in the audience, as I always say, because it's always surprising when we always have more people in the audience. It's like we're popular or something. So, it's great to see everyone, um, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to congratulate the town, the Marco and Hinch crew for such a great day Saturday at the baseball park for opening. That's one of the largest crowds I've seen there in a long time, and I just spent my 42nd year attending the opening day. Police Chief and Hinch Crew did a great job of controlling traffic. And I was telling somebody earlier, I went hunting Saturday morning, knowing that I was gonna have a hard time finding the perfect spot when I came out of the woods. My old parking spot was empty when I got there, and I didn't know what the world's doing on me. So, anyway, to the youth association, to the Town Parks and Rec Program, thank you so much. And we had several elected officials there, our town manager was there. It was just amazing to see, what is it, 60-something that we were was? Which is down a huge from what it used to be. But thank you all who attended, and thank you to our Parks and Rec and our town and our youth program for doing what they did to make it go off to.
Okay, Commissioner Lay, Commissioner Gray.
Well, I have just, I have just a few things. Um, first of all, it was reported that the children are digging holes in the launching pad in the sand over at the lake where the boats and the cabs are launched. And some of them are stepping in the holes, not seeing all the tripping. And it was suggested, is there any way we could have some sandboxes put in for children to go there instead of digging up there on the launching pad?
Um, I'll have that conversation with Parks and Rec tomorrow this evening.
Okay. Uh, and of course, as y'all know, the lake was grounded this weekend with the, the people. And another suggestion from a citizen said, is there any way you could get maybe a police officer or even hiring an off-duty school guard that could go there and sort of direct traffic and let people, make people stop so other people can get in and out of the park area?
I'll cover that with, uh, Chief Dollar, General.
Has a lake attendant been hired yet?
Yes.
Good. Well, uh, I think this all that I.
We have two returning. Hello, okay. We have two returning, um, seasonal, and then we've hired two others. So, we have four, four lake attendants.
Thank you, Commissioner Lay. There's been, the last four community events have been, the attendance has been outstanding here in Hope Mills. Kicking off with the Expo, Senior Expo, and then the Easter Day Event, and then we went into Opening Day. And every one of these events are starting to maximize. We're starting to see so many families, so many kids are coming, so many seniors are coming out to a lot of our community events, and that is a testament to who we are as a town and what we're offering to folks who live here every day, that live and work here. And I'll tell you, in every one of these events, it takes volunteers from our committees, and it also takes dedication from our Parks and Rec and our staff members to make sure that everything works the way it's supposed to work. And that is a huge reflection that's on Chancellor and all the department heads that work for our town, who are in concert with each other to make sure that all these events are great. I'll tell you, this, just like this, this past Saturday, Opening Day, huge. Not only was it huge here, but if you were down in Woodpecker Stadium, Zagra, Saturday night, it was packed there too. It really, really was. Now, tonight, we've got a presentation. I hope some of you hang down for it because we've got a rockfish gonna present and talk about, uh, Hope Mills baseball teams gonna talk about where they are. They'll be coming up to speak about some things tonight, so that's, uh, some, some highlights coming up. I'm glad that this flashbang was asked about. I'll tell you, a home run goes, I'll give it to the rockfish. A home run goes to the rockfish because all I heard Saturday and Sunday was, finally, there's been concessions in the concession stand and the park for the kids and the parents, finally. And that, that has been something that's really been missed for a long time. So, that's all I have. I'm gonna go into the proclamation, wait a minute.
I don't have anything. They said it all.
She let me jump right over. Oh, she let me jump right over. Okay, Earth Day proclamation. I've got a couple of them. These are a little bit lengthy, so I'll read through them. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, 20 million Americans, 10% of the U.S. population at the time, took to the streets, college campuses, and hundreds of cities to protest environmental ignorance and demand a new way forward for our planet. The first Earth Day is credited for launching the modern environmental movement, which is now recognized as the planet's largest civil event. And whereas the theme for Earth Day 2024 is Invest in Our Planet, scientists, non-governmental organizations, businesses, governments worldwide now are looking at natural systems, processes, and emerging green technologies to restore the world's ecosystems, forests, conserve and rebuild soils, improve farming practices, restore wildlife populations, and rid the world's oceans of plastic. And whereas where the world waits for global political and business leaders to take a decisive action to reduce carbon emissions, natural processes including vegetation and soil conservation can store massive amounts of carbon while restoring biodiversity, clean water and air, and rebalancing ecosystems. Restoration is pragmatic and necessary to reduce climate change. And whereas the concerned citizens of the Town of Hope Mills are dedicated to the protection and preservation of our environment, and on April 20th, 2024, will participate in a spring litter sweep event and will sponsor a hazardous waste trade event. Notice the key there, it's April 20th, coming up. Now, therefore, I Jesse Bellflower is Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2024, Earth Day in the Town of Hope Mills, and urge all to use this time to celebrate our only planet and commit to building a sustainable, green economy. We proclaim this day 15th day, 15th day of April. The next one, and where would we be without our administrative professionals? Every business has them, oh yes. Oh yes, every business. So, April 26th is, yeah, April 26th, 2024 is Administrative Professionals, Professionals Day. Whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating, coordinating the office operations of businesses, nonprofits, government, education institutions, and other organizations. And whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities. And most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. And whereas administrative professionals are vital contributors in today's team-oriented work environment and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. And whereas Administrative Professional, Professionals Day is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the importance and board contributions of administrative support staff, and is supported by the International Association of Administrative Professionals. And whereas Administrative Professionals Day serves as a time to salute the valuable contributions of administrative professionals in the Town of Hope Mills, yes. And to recognize the similar importance of their work in accomplishing the mission and vision of their place of work. And now, therefore, I Jesse Bellflower is Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, proclaiming April 26th, 2024 as Administrative Professionals Day in Hope Mills, North Carolina, and encourage all residents to recognize and appreciate their administrative support, proclaiming this day, 15th day of April 2024. As I read that, like I said earlier, all of us have administrative professionals that do so much work for us every day. And I know we enjoy that on campus. I know that Mayor Bo-Tim McCray and I do, as long as, as every department here in the town. And let me tell you, we have an excellent set of administrative professionals that are there for the town and there for the board and there for each other every day. And that's, and that is a testament to both of Kukwanda and to Ashley. Thank you so much for what you guys do. Before I jump into the next presentation, how did the pickleball tournament go?
I'm glad you asked. Well, the reason that I was not at the opening day on Saturday is because I was working. There was a pickleball tournament at the college, um, so it was the first pickleball tournament. In my area, there are two guys that helped, um, they helped run the tournament, but it was sold out. It was the first time doing it. It was great. It was my first time actually seeing a pickleball tournament and pickleball being played in person. So, um, I'm glad you asked, because I didn't want to make it seem like I was absent. But the pickleball tournament was fabulous, and I can't wait till we're able to host something at Town of Hope Mills.
Thank you very much. You know you wouldn't go get away with that, without that. Yeah, 'cause I wanted to be there too. Like, well, I was here at Opening Day, you were at pickleball, yeah. All right, next item, Mr. Recognized VFW 2024 Public Safety Officer of the Year, Yuri. I know I'm not gonna get this name. There's no way. B-O-N-D-A-R-E-D. Bondarev.
So, every year, and, uh, every year, the VFW gets to recognize outstanding public safety officers on police, fire department, 911 operators, R-C-M-S, for the, the incredible work that they do in our community. So, um, so at the end of the year last year, when I asked the chief, I was like, you know, which one of your outstanding officers can we, uh, we recognize this year? I was really happy that Officer Bondarev's name was on the list. I don't know if he remembers or not. Anyways, it was a Saturday morning, and I get this phone call at my house, and I'm looking at my phone, and it says, "Internet call." And I was like, "Internet call?" I almost hung up on it before I picked it up. And then I picked it up, and it was Officer Bondarev, but it was, his accent, when he was on the phone, he's like, "I'm outside your front door. Somebody just broke into your building." And I'm like, "Well, I'm standing in front of my front door, and I'm looking outside of my building, and nobody's breaking into my building." He's like, "Oh, no, somebody broke your window out." And I was like, "Well, I can see my windows." And then finally, he said, "I'm at the post." So, we raced, we raced down there, and, and somebody had broken out the window. And, uh, this little rock that I saved over the time was there. So, um, I got to see him in action personally, and, and it was a great choice, and I'm so thankful that we have people like you in our community to, to protect us and to serve us. Um, Hope Mills is a better place for the work that you do for us every day. Thank you. This is just not a piece of paper. Comes with a little financial incentive that I hope you'll be able to use to have a nice dinner or something later on. And, uh, you know, thanks, Mayor, for letting us have here. Our, our mayor is also a VFW member of our post as long as 3 shirts to roll. It's on there. You know, we're, we're an active group in this town. We got a lot of things coming up. May 3rd, we have a barbecue fundraiser in Kukwata. You know, we hope you all come down to the post and have a nice plate of barbecue. And of course, May 27th, Monday, May 27th, is Memorial Day. And then quickly following Memorial Day is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. So, if you happen to know any World War II veterans in the community, there's about 189 of them left in front of the county. Um, you know, take that opportunity to, to thank them as well. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a swearing in of police officers. I know them. I'm really happy to be saying that. First one is, I'm just gonna spell them, A-S-H-U-L-Y-O-N-F-E-U-R-T-A-D-O. How do you pronounce that?
Ashulion.
Ashulion, okay. Colin Hurt, uh, Hunt, sorry. Garrett Johnson, and Tim McLees Sealy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Chief, you bring up your officers, a possible swearing in of. All right, code of office, I say to them. Do you hereby, you solemn swear, uh, you solemn swear that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce criminal laws of this day. Do hereby, yeah, I mean, you solemn swear that I will be alert and vigilant. To enforce criminal laws of this day, to enforce criminal laws of this day, that I will not be influenced in any manner, on any amount of violence, or prejudice. That I will support maintaining the Constitution of the laws, of the United States, and the Constitution of laws, and the Constitution of North Carolina, not inconsistent, not inconsistent. Therewith, that I will faithfully, and impartially discharge duties of my office, of my office, as a law enforcement officer, as a law enforcement officer, and as police officer. And as a police officer for the Town of Hope Mills, for the Town of Hope Mills, according to the best force and methods of my skill, my abilities, ability, and judgment, so help me. These are blacks, I'm glad we're good to say, on each piece of police officer. It's really something to say, I'm not gonna read it. I'm just saying, it's the law enforcement code that happens. This is what defines them, the job that they do. This is what defines them, the job that they do for our community every day as a police officer, law enforcement. And I think this is really what it's something.
Now you guys come over here and sign your roles.
Yes, thank you very much.
And this way, this way, this way. So if you have to put um, all the time, and then we'll get you a copy before you. You guys get the angles, Ash. Congratulations.
It's always an honor.
This is. Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to read this and then it's going to be on. Certificate of Promotion by order of Chief of Police, that's very nice of him. The Jack Up Church is hereby promoted to the position of Sergeant. It's fifteenth day of April twenty twenty-four. I went through the first slide. I say your name. You solemn swear that I will be alert, that I will be vigilant, to enforce criminal laws of this day, to enforce criminal laws of this day. We need to get this right. That's real nice. All right, where were we? That I will not be influenced, that I will not be influenced in any manner, on account, on account of violence or prejudice, or violence or prejudice, and I will support anything, laws, anything, not constitutional laws, constitutional, the United States laws of the United States, and the constitution laws and constitutional laws of North Carolina, of North Carolina, not inconsistent, not inconsistent, therewith, therewith, that I will faithfully, that I will faithfully, and impartially, and impartially discharge duties of my office, discharge duties of my office, as a law enforcement officer, as a law enforcement officer, and as police sergeant, and as police sergeant, for the town of Hope Mills, for the town of Hope Mills, according to the best of my skills, according to the best of my abilities, and judgment, so help me, uh, certainly. Next item on our list under presentations is a presentation by Ben and Melissa Marsh, Marsh, general managers from the Hope Mills Rockfish baseball team. And they can bring their party up to the mic. Give us a, an update on where we are today and where we're going as we go between today and getting ready for open for your opening game on May twenty-fifth.
Uh, with me is the wife of Melissa. She's the general manager and then part owner of the team. His wife is Billy Stern and Megan Stern. Um, right now we are in the process of having the fence and everything put up at the park. Um, we got sod laid down last week. Um, irrigation stuff is going. Um, they started framing up the press box this morning. They should have that finished probably by early next week. Um, so we can move on to the next phase of it. We get the electrical and and all that sort of stuff finished with it. Um, we're to the point of getting down to the short rows. So there's going to be a lot of progress going on in a short amount of time. So you'll see people up there working every single day from here on out. Um, our first home game is the night of May twenty-fifth, but there will be fourteen-year-old kids from the rec league playing on the field actually before the Rockfish play on it. And so that's going to be a huge night for those and night of the uh, for the field. Um, if we're here to answer any questions that the town or anyone has for us that we can clarify or.
This is the board's opportunity to to ask our baseball teams if they have any questions or concerns or anything they'd like to share with, with you while you're here. Because we're going to blink our eye and it's going to be May twenty-fifth. And we just want to make sure that you guys are successful and that you're getting all the support that you need, uh, to be ready for that May twenty-fifth opening day. So this will be an opportunity for any questions.
I have a, a quick question. Do you guys have a flyer for opening day on the twenty fifth?
We have not made it yet. I will wait.
Get that to me. If you get it to me, um, a week before May sixth, I can put it in the manager's report to help promote it. And we'll start blasting out on social media.
Okay. And we're also going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony for the field also before the games take place. We haven't set a date for that yet, but there will be a ribbon.
Let me know about that. I'll coordinate and make sure y'all are.
Um, I know there's one other, some questions going around about the alcohol sales over there. Um, there's going to be a beer garden. The beer garden is going, we haven't set a direct spot for it yet, but it's going to be on the, probably on the first base side. There the press box, the press box, top four will be press box, bottom four will be alcohol merchandise sales. Um, and all the alcohol will stay over on that side of the field away from the park and splash pad. And the only way to buy alcohol in there is if you pay for it at the gate, come in, then get a wristband and then you'll get it for purchase alcohol. Alcohol will only stay inside the fenced in area. It will not be allowed outside that fenced in area out of the parking lot. It would be totally off limits standing alcohol.
And only during Hope Mills Rockfish games, no other games, no other events will we be selling any alcohol.
And it will not be sold from the concession stand?
From, no, not the concession stand itself. It'll be only sold in the bottom level of the press box, which will be right behind home plate. There's high school age kids that work the concession stand and obviously, you know, state law regulations, you have to have someone twenty more dollars to sell alcohol. So that's where that'll be sold at. It will not be mixed in with the concessions open off.
Is there anything else that we can do for you to make this a success?
Um, the only thing that, that I could think of right now would be something in the future we'd be looking at updating or expanding or possibly redoing the concession stand entirely because it's really small in there now for three to four people to be working, plus all of the, the inventory we have to stock in there.
We'd love for you guys to come out and look at the inside of that concession stand. Um, it has not been updated in a long time. We were very fortunate that they have skilled partnered with us and built us a beautiful Rockfish orange metal countertop. There wasn't even a countertop in there that we do before. Um, we'd love for you guys to come over and look. We're trying our best to get it updated. I have test control coming in today to spray. It has not been sprayed out in years. Um, so we're doing our best with all we've got. We'd love for you guys to concede there could be some major improvements and that would really benefit not just our games, but all the games, the red games and people who are there at the park because just some of our space in there is not even, there's no equipment. Everything that is in there, we've done. Um, so it'd be a good idea for you guys to come and look at what we're working on. Um, Monday through Friday, we're currently open at four and then that would be to get to the games. And they're closing around eight or eight thirty. On Saturdays and Sundays, we're opening at twelve. Once school gets out, because we do, a lot of family homeschool students will be opening earlier around twelve o'clock. We're waiting for the school.
If we were to go see you, you won't be there early.
Yeah, please, let's make an appointment. I'll meet you out there anytime I'm ready.
Whenever time is best for y'all, we can schedule it and all of us be out there at one time. It'd be better to do it during when it's not open so we can actually come to you in there and let you see everything.
We'll make you sleep.
Do you have any suggested date yet for where we go?
We're going to try to do it around the first week of May. I'm scheduling. I want to try to coordinate and have the most people there. Um, we're inviting all of you guys, of course, our owners, our sponsors and people that have partnered with us to help make, make this a success. So we'll, we'll get that date to you guys as soon as possible.
We got some dates. Who want to be out of town? Is that one of them?
No, we should be back on the twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. We should be, uh, definitely be back, uh, here, uh, first of all.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do we want to look at a date? Probably a Saturday maybe, or we can go down and look at the uh, concession stand and field. So we'll, uh, we'll see what the consensus of the board is for a date for the majority of us if it's possible to come down and just do one more. I want to share something and I've shared this with the board before so they, they know and we know collectively, the board knows, is that a lot of folks have expressed a great appreciation for all the parks and rec communities that are going on in the park. And we know that the concession stand is one, is, is one of those that needs some attention. We know that. We, not only do we know that, we, we also hear from citizens, parents and children that are out there on that inclusive playground along with that splash pad opening up, is that over the years we're doing great things on the park, but we haven't done anything with the concession stand. We, we got it. We truly do. We've got it. Uh, it's just a question of what we're going to do and and the budget's coming up for next year. So it's a lot of big decisions that we're going to have to make on what we do with that concession stand going forward. We truly appreciate. Now you guys have, you're going to be running the concession stand year round. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, and it'll be open seven days a week.
Seven days a week, regardless of ballgames, regardless. So it's not, when that splash pad opens, you're going to see a tremendous amount of more people come to the park. And we are too. And so is the entire community excited about that. And like I said, this weekend I heard finally there's been some, something with the concession stand to offer the folks that come to the park that hasn't been there in, in years. So we're really appreciative that you guys are going to have. I'm glad to hear that you guys got a plan for the alcohol sales on the games. That's very important. And like Commissioner Blake said, if there's something that, that we can do to help you guys, uh, please don't hesitate. Reach out to the board or Marco, Chancellor, because we're, we are one team. We're one family in this community and we're one team. We work together. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, I have one more. Do you have a cutoff time for selling alcohol and game night?
It will be seventh inning, just like normal baseball games. All baseball games nationwide, the seventh inning is the cutoff time for alcohol sales.
That's good. Chief won't have to holler again.
And one last update on the uh, as part of the contract with the concession stand on putting the second concession window in, that window is a special order. We have the window in. We're waiting on the Brick Mason schedule when he can cut the hole in the building to install it. Uh, the metal people, the metal steel, if it's sitting on go, as soon as the Brick Mason can cut the window, that'll be installed, which will hopefully be maybe towards later this week versus next week.
One, before you go, one final shout out to Cumberland County schools. You're hiring students from Cumberland County schools through the I-CON system, which we know benefits our high school s- uh, school, uh, students. Every year they look for, for intern jobs, uh, in different places. And I'm glad that you guys have reached out and worked with Sarah. She told me about it as well as you did. And you guys are going to be able to employ some of our high school students. And that, that is such a, a return back to our community to give them the opportunity.
That's really what we focus on. We have a high school student, um, who, you know, this is what he wants. He wants to be able to work at a ball field. So the way that we're doing it is not only to network in the concession stands, they can rotate around the field to get all kinds of different jobs. They can work in the ticket booth, learn how to count money. They can work other than the announcer booth, or that's about that aspect of the job. So it's not just one thing. It's a pretty unique situation that they can move around the ball field and work lots of jobs. Plus they also get high school credit.
They do. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night. Come out to make me fit up tonight.
We'll see you before then. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I believe we're, I don't believe we have any. Anybody signed? Nope. Anybody signed for the public comments? Nope. On the consent agenda is next. Item A, consideration of approval of the board of commissioners April one regular meeting. Item B, acceptance of monthly financial report March twenty twenty-four, tab five. Item C, adoption of ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four, oh, two, twenty twenty-four, independence parade dot road closure, tab six. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
Motion, motion to second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor. Send down a pose, motion carries. It's the end of consent agenda. We go to whole business. And that's item A, discussion and possible action of Historic Preservation Committee, HBC, changing to Historic Preservation Commission, HBC, and to review the suggested HBC ordinance amendment number twenty-two-four dash oh-three. That's under tab seven. This is a tabled item from our last meeting that we're bringing back to this board meeting and our town manager, Chancellor Mabaklin, will begin the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as the mayor stated at our last April first board meeting, this was on the agenda on the new business. Since that time, um, staff and I attended the Historic Preservation Committee meeting on April tenth and provided a presentation. Um, ultimately what I provided them with is, um, a presentation of where we currently are. Um, I do think that if we're gonna, um, um, consider this, um, proposal to reinstate the commission, I did want everyone to at least know exactly where the commission stands. Um, there are new board members that are in place now in terms of the elected that were not in place when it was decommissioned to a committee. There are people on the historic committee that were not in place as well. So before we actually talked about reinstatement, I wanted to just let them know exactly where we were. And so what I presented to them in terms of, um, what we currently have or where we now, um, the historic district is registered on a national register of restored places. Uh, this is not the same as establishing an historic district pursuant to one sixty B, but, uh, the national district may allow building owners to get tax credits for rehabilitation work, but that designation does not affect the ability to use their properties. And so the district is on the national register, but that does not render all the buildings in the district as historic buildings. They are contributing structures. Um, with the establishment of the district pursuant to general statutes, they can only make changes to the exterior of the buildings with a certificate of appropriateness issued fully, um, issued by fully operational Historic Preservation Commission. So those are some of the powers that will be distilled on the committee if reinstated. Um, these certificates can only be issued, um, once reinstated, but they have to be done through a quasi judicial hearing. And so that's another aspect. This is not just a regular committee. When you reinstate a commission, it almost serves as a board of adjustment because it's a quasi judicial proceeding. And that's the proceedings where those approvals of a certificate of appropriateness would actually be granted. Um, what has taken place so far, and before it was decommissioned, um, they actually did approve rules of procedure. Um, that outlines what you would actually do during a quasi judicial hearing to entertain a request for a certificate of appropriateness. They also, um, adopted generic guidelines. Um, the state Historic Preservation Commit, Commission has fifteen generic guidelines that they recommend that historic commissions that are trying to be created adopt. They're technically placeholders, but there are generic regulations that will allow them to have control over, um, construction. And just to clarify- And just to clarify, we also informed everyone that this applies to exterior construction and additions to existing buildings and new construction. And so those guidelines provide some type of teeth, uh, to the commission, but those two things were already adopted. So I wanted everyone to know, if reinstated, those two major aspects of operating the commission are already in place. Um, what's next? Um, my recommendation should would be that there a should be a series of public works, work sessions facilitated, um, on the current status of the commission to the board. Uh, this would allow the general public to be engaged, typically if we're doing, um, zoning amendments to the code, we do a series of work sessions prior to board meetings. That allows the committee to present the plan of action to the board, that allows the dialogue with the general public. Um, but it also allows the zoning process to be enacted because these amendments must be adopted through the zoning board, under the, um, zoning department through the planning board and things of that nature. And so what's what's next is, I've also contacted the state because I do think it would be very powerful for the state to be present at this kickoff session so that they are invested and involved in this process throughout. And so, um, once this, um, ultimately happens, I do think that we talked about, uh, a couple of actions that I do think legitimized the request. We talked about possibly getting the chapel nominated, we talked about making those guidelines actually, um, a little bit more detailed. They could hire a consultant that would come in and take those general guidelines and actually do a massive report on what the character of Hope Mills was back when it was a mill town. So now you have historic guidelines that are tied specifically to what that mill town used to be like. Um, the CLG status is another, you can't get the CLG status without a commission, you can't actually do a nomination, landmark designation without a commission. So I do think those will be parts of the plan of action that they can present to the board. But I do think that we set the actual hearings, once we get in contact with the state, I've actually made contact with them, we're trying to set a date. So that's when I'll come back to you guys on the date. But my recommendation is, before we actually consider reinstatement, that would be a legitimate plan of action that we give the confidence back to the board that this is being done, um, in a, in a way that yields the best success of the commission if you did so choose to.
One, one of the guidelines or one of the things they have to do, they have to be a commission and need to once a month for a year before they can even apply for a CLG. Um, so the longer we delay not giving them back their commission, the longer it's gonna take to get the CLG and the other things, if I'm not correct, Cheryl?
That is correct, there's a one-year period that you have to be an operational committee, uh, commission to get CLG status. Um, it's simply that my suggestion is to make sure that, we understand that the CLG grant, CLG actual status gives you an opportunity for grant funding. There are also other avenues that you pursue a grant funding, we're actually talking to Engriff, uh, program to pursue that as well. I just want to make sure that the foundation based on the request for reinstatement is rooted in activity that the commission's gonna actually undertake. So even if you get the CLG status, the work sessions allow the committee to actually talk about what they're gonna do if they get the grant funding. Are you gonna actually take a building and restore it? Are you gonna use some of that funding to actually pay for the consultant for the historic guidelines and things of that nature? So, um, that's what I feel would be the best approach. Um, and, you know, these are things that I think should be done in a meticulous manner because this is a little bit different when you're restoring powers that would almost equal what you guys have in terms of a governing authority. We need to make sure we're taking the proper steps to make sure this is done properly, and I think this is a plan of action that would allow us to be able to do that.
Thank you, Chancellor. I think, um, I think the workshop is is necessary, I think it's educational. It's been, I think, five years since the last workshop was still, it was a joint workshop when I was when I was on the board. There's been a lot of, a lot of different things that have happened over this period of time. We've got new members on the HPC, we have new members on the board tonight. Uh, and that workshop, I I really do, I think that is the foundation, and it's very educational to kind of break the ice and see exactly what all entails for the commission and for each of the of the members that are on the HPC. So, as soon as we can get that workshop where the, uh, actual state officials can come down and breathe in a very, uh, timely manner, like Commissioner Craver said, as soon as we can do that, then we can see exactly where we are and make an assessment. Agreed, agreed. I think it's an excellent plan of action, it really is. Okay, you have comments?
Mayor, do you have anything you need to add to this?
No, I think Chancellor probably, unless there's any questions.
Okay, moving on.
I just want to say that, um, I appreciate that Chancellor telling me the date and running out the plan of action and course and, uh, that if it is out there to be that, I I can, I can say without support that that actually is worth moving forward with that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Yes, and that was, and that meeting was just, uh, recent with the HPC, and that's where this plan of action came from. As Chancellor presented, Commissioner Marley was there, Commissioner, I was there as well, Commissioner Craver was there. Uh, I think the goal is is to restore the commission, but we have to do it the right way. And I think that workshop starts that way. Okay, moving on, any other comments? Item C under new business, and she is here tonight. In June, our Cumberland County Joint Planning Representative, Sue Moody, will be leaving her, um, her position. So the appointment tonight under item C is the appointment of Betty Lynn as the Hope Mills Representative for Cumberland County Joint Planning Board. Did I jump? Oh, I jumped a little. Let me get her out of the way and then I'll come back to eight minutes. I'll throw my finger behind. So, I'd like to ask the board to make a motion to approve Betty Lynn as our next Hope Mills Representative for the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board.
So, will. Can I make that motion that we approve the path from the three to the nine? As our representative to the town.
Motion, second?
Yes.
Second. We're gonna put them making motions.
What are our contributions?
Commissioner Craver got the second. All in favor? Okay. All in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. I'll go back to item A, thank you very much Betty Lynn for representing us. I'll go back to item A, authorizing the JW HP SC Elevator Maintenance Agreement and for the town manager to execute set contract minutes under tab eight. Under tab eight. That, that discussion will be for the town manager, Chancellor McLaughlin.
This is just, uh, authorizing the approval of the, uh, it's a ten-year maintenance agreement. Um, part of the, um, destruction of the building does come with a series of maintenance agreements for, uh, companies to come in and actually perform that, and that's what this ultimate contract is for.
I know with the motion, there will be, um, authorize the town manager to, uh, execute said contract with JW HP SC Elevator Maintenance.
A motion, may I have a second? Any discussion? The only question I have is, would we approve this tonight, is this, is this gonna be in this year's budget or is it gonna be in next year's budget?
Uh, it is this year's budget.
All in favor? Seen none opposed, motion carries. Item B, authorizing the offer to purchase and contract real property for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars entered into by the town of Hope Mills in North Carolina, Minnis, Fountain, the buyer, and Gardner Holdings LLC, a North Carolina limited liability company, the seller, and to adopt corresponding budget amendment number twenty-two, and that's under tab nine.
Um, this is related to the two properties at the corner of Fountain Lane and Hope Mills Road. Uh, the board, uh, wanted to approve it last meeting, but we didn't have an actual physical offer to purchase in hand. So we have received, uh, received that from, uh, Mr. Gardner, uh, our time of turn to review, and this is what we're presenting for you this evening. We do think that this is a key acquisition, um, to get these two properties under our ownership. Uh, we are talking about possible expansion of the parking, um, at the Hope Mills Lane, which will allow us to have a much, um, better circulation pattern. And so my recommendations for approval of this plan.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. Any comments from the board before we call for the vote?
Yes, I'd like to say one thing, I'd like to see this parking lot dedicated to parents with children. Let that be for children, so they are not parking over at the bank and the, uh, the other buildings over there and having the Dodge cars getting over. On Saturday, I saw a lady with two children, with a dog, dodging cars, and I just wanted to get up there and stop the cars, but I knew I couldn't do that. But I'd like to see that dedicated so that children are already on that side of the lake instead of having to go across the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver.
I don't know how that would be enforceable though, because I mean, like, I'm excited because I just got a nice new pack, and I'm gonna have to trailer because I'm, you know, I'm packing. And a nice new parking lot would definitely be give me a lot more space, but I don't know how it's gonna be able to be regulated to just children specific, especially since when it gets hot, they're there early, early, early in the morning, and if it's filled all early, I don't know how.
I will, I will say, um, the, um, the multi-use path on the lakeside is, um, actually out in the middle, should be pretty soon. There's another grant that we have for, uh, new crosswalks at Fountain Lane and Hope Mills Road. Uh, Trey Street, full enhancement of that crosswalk intersection and a mid-block crossing. If you drive through this parking lot here, the speed bumps have brick pavers on them for pedestrian crossings. That will be, um, done mid-block between Fountain Lane and Trey Street, that will slow down traffic. But so my point is, we're in the process of fostering a much more safer pedestrian-friendly environment out there. We have granting money for those projects already, but trying to actually get more. And so I do do understand that concern about people crossing the street, but we do have projects on the books to actually create a much more friendly environment. I do think that we could possibly factor some things into the design. Tonight is really about acquiring the land, but I do think that there are some things that we have, um, on the books and things that we move forward that will create that that much safer pedestrian environment that we're looking for.
How many parking spots do we anticipate that will create?
Um, we don't know right offhand, uh, we just know that, uh, we do know that that it could be expanded. Um, but right now, like I said, what's paramount is just getting those two properties under our ownership.
I know I was by there Saturday and it was a nightmare. I mean, it was half a people. I'd like to make a motion that we acquire the land, uh, on Fountain Lane to, for our parks and recreation use and other uses. That's that with the town of Redding.
You have a motion? We have a second.
Specifically, the motion is for you to approve this.
Got two, you're gonna have to read the whole thing.
They don't need to read the whole thing, but it needs to just be for the appropriate.
So, may I amend the motion to say to approve budget amendment number twenty-two and authorize the offer to purchase and contract of real property in amount of one hundred and fifty dollars entered into by the town of Hope Mills. Hundred fifty thousand.
Still got the second, got a motion, got a second, any further discussion? I want to say this, that under the original master plan for for the lake park, McAdams, we had that identified, we had both of those parcels identified for parking because we knew that eventually we would need additional parking at the lake. So, Commissioner Lake, I don't know if if you still have that old or that conceptual master plan from McAdams. I know I have a copy, the marker does, and it kind of details how much the spaces are. But even ten spaces is a benefit to all the folks and families that are coming down to the lake park. So it is a really huge investment for the town to promote these parcels, it really, really is. All in favor? Seen none opposed, motion carries. Now we're back to item C again, which I started off with. Yeah, yeah. So Betty, I want to say this again, thank you very much for stepping forward to volunteer to serve, serve our town as a joint planning board member for the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board, an office that you actually worked at once upon a time as planning, as a planning director. And also Betty Lynn worked here at at Hope Mills for a short period of time in our planning department as well. So she's not, she's not new to to planning at all. She will be a huge benefit to not only Hope Mills, she'll be a benefit to all nine municipalities in Cumberland County. And I say that with respect, I truly, truly do. You've heard that, Betty. Committee ladies, an update on committee activities, we kick it off with Commissioner Brian Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this really sent me an email, uh, outlining the activities for the HPC, but, um, basically, we've already covered everything that, uh, was thrown open the last meeting on May the tenth. Like I said, the town manager was there, I was there, uh, Mayor Bellfire was a commissioner. Um, Commissioner Craver, uh, was in attendance. Uh, we discussed, uh, the, uh, process for the, uh, bringing back the commission. Chancellor outlined that detail for the members that were, uh, present. Also, they discussed the, uh, headstone cleaning project, um, and discussed whether permit from the town and permission from the families would be required to look forward to that project. And also, um, she wanted to let everybody know that there is two openings under the committee. And, um, if you, uh, if there's anybody that's interested or has special interest in town history, um, please step forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Next, Commissioner Craver.
What I can report on is already taking place. Um, I'd like to say what a wonderful day it was Saturday, I watched all of it on, on, on video, I'm sorry I couldn't be there, but, uh, pulled my back out and I was in bed for two days up until I got these little shots this morning, so that's why I'm here tonight. Uh, I do want to, um, tell about the additional events that's coming up. And one of them is trucks and stuff on May the twenty-ninth at the memorial, uh, Veterans Memorial Park, and I'm sorry, I don't know the time for that, do you? Do you know where's Lamar Ben? Okay, so do we know the time for the? So do we have the time for this? At the golf course? Okay, Wes said he'll, at the Veterans Memorial Park. Wouldn't that be a hit? But have you changed it to?
Well, actually, we have it for golf, and it has a very large tenant, people in the lower front.
Will you get out, correct that, do you have?
It's, it's made of four at the golfing greenway. Ten more.
Well, yes, I took off the fire, what we said at the meeting, I said. Um, the next one is June nineteenth, to be held on June the thirteenth at Dirtbag El S. Uh, then we have on the twenty-fourth of June is Independence Day, and that's when the fireworks are gonna be done, and if it rains, it's gonna be on the next day, on the thirtieth, on that Sunday. Then on the fourth of July, we're actually having a parade on, of that day this year, and it begins at ten o'clock. We will be, uh, starting at Rockfish Elementary and will be ending over at Hope Mills Middle Street. Other than that, that's all I have until our next meeting next week.
Thank you, Commissioner Grayber. Commissioner Legg? Commissioner Srover?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of, quite a few things, so I made my little, little checklist. So, along with my Veterans Affairs committee meetings and stuff like that, I'm also the air quality person. Um, so there was an air quality update today. I posted it on my, um, Facebook page. The, um, air quality is moderate, yellow. Um, today was moderate, tomorrow's also moderate, um. I believe on the link on my page, I also have the information of what the little particles are, so, um, just be wary of that, um, the air quality. Also, Earth Day, the, at Festival Park, the Earth Day Celebration is, um, on the twentieth at Festival Park from nine to three. I know they're supposed to have an electric vehicle car show, they're supposed to have a cornhole tournament, um, with booths and vendors and stuff like that for Earth Day. So that's going on, that's from nine to three at Festival Park. Then also, um, one of the classes I took for, for the town gave me this really nice oversized binder, and it's the disaster recovery, public assistance, financial administrative training, so it's fancy, fancy stuff, so in the event of a, uh, uh, emergency, be like, what are we supposed to do? And I'll be like, I really don't know, let me read the book. True story. Um, but there's some information, and I, I've really talked with our town manager about it, uh, in the event of a national, um, emergency or, uh, any kind of, um, catastrophic, yes, disaster, catastrophic event, um, and also have contact with Emery Yao from the, um, what is the actual, Mid-Carolina Regional Council. Um, one of their concerns is, and it's not just Hope Mills, it's quite a few different, uh, municipalities local, because they even asked Fountain Lake about theirs, um, in the event of emergency or, you know, national disaster, say Hope Mills Town Hall gets blown away, we have pictures of, you know, you know, what everything looks like. No, we don't, but that's something we're gonna easily fix. So I have the whole plan, I give it to the town manager, we're gonna make sure our town assets are properly cataloged, so in the event of a national emergency and, you know, the town gets wiped off the face of the earth, and we have pictures, so, you know, that's the important thing. Um, but more to follow on that. Um, FAMBO, now our town manager does an awesome job where I really don't have to brief much about FAMBO because he includes that in our manager's report. So a lot of the stuff that I was gonna brief is actually part of his manager's report for the NCDOT construction update, so if anybody has any questions about that stuff, it's on his manager's report for the FAMBO stuff. Um, let dates, some of the let dates have passed, so looking soon, get some of the road widening stuff happening. All right, that's FAMBO, disaster recovery. One last thing, let me go through my paperwork. So, I had a social with Ethan Van Bronckhorff, um, this last week. Uh, I met up with some of the, uh, one of the older men from Spring Lake, um, Marvin Lackman, and Spring Lake is implementing a military tribute banner program. Now, their, their, uh, suspense date had already passed, but I was able to submit my own thing, and it's something that I wanted to get more information on and do it myself, so I'd be like, hey, maybe this is something that Hope Mills can do. So ultimately, what it is, is, um, I had to pay a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, I get a large banner made by the company. They'll have, well, it's gonna have, it'll probably have Spring Lake on it, because it's for Spring Lake, but, um, it'll have my name, the service, um, I put my rack on there, have my photo on there, and from Memorial Day to Veterans Day, the banner will be displayed in their town, and upon completion of that timeframe, the banner can come back to me or I can tell Spring Lake to hold on to it. Uh, if it has Spring Lake on it, I'll just let them hold on to it, because I don't think that would look right. Um, we're gonna see how it works out, and that may be something I see that our town may get implemented. Um, the sponsorship, yeah, the banner sponsorship was a hundred and eighty-eight dollars, there's a slew of paperwork I had to submit for my two fourteen, but, um, it looked, it looked really, really cool, so, uh, as soon as I see it completed, I'll take pictures and report back with more information, but, uh, I think that's everything.
All right, that's a lot.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Proten, Dr. McFarlane.
Uh, for the Hopeless Prime Overs, I am still looking for, uh, younger adults between the ages of eighteen thirty-nine, it's eighteen to thirty-nine to join that committee. Uh, the Arts and, uh, Culture Committee met for the first time on Thursday. We had three members that came, so we didn't vote on any official business, but we did talk about a couple of ideas, and, um, one of the things, well, some of the things that we talked about were maybe hosting art shows at the town, at Town Hall in conjunction with some of our public schools, um, and also working with some of the schools to display the kids' art through Town Hall, Parks and Rec, and maybe working with the businesses to get students' artwork displayed in the businesses as well. We talked about, um, the walking trails, the bridge over the lake, and maybe the, um, uh, maybe the sidewalks on Trade Street, doing some artwork on some of, in some of those areas, because I wanted to do a crosswalk, but I know that a lot of the roads in Hope Mills are gonna be ripped up and torn up soon, so I didn't want to go that route because it is fairly expensive to do that. And, um, I did hear after the meeting that, um, the old building, Grace Place on, uh, Main Street, there's a, a building beside that church that the owner did say that we could, somebody could put a mural there. We've been trying to find places in, um, the town, buildings or businesses that people would give us permission to work with some artists to actually put a mural to encompass, um, the town of Hope Mills. So we're actually, they're talking about doing one at the college for FTC, and I was telling them how cool it looked, uh, they were, they were incorporating the military different programs that we had there, the Rose Garden, it was just like a culmination, but it's, um, uh, it was a building that we purchased, the old time town, but it'd be a gateway coming into campus and how it's nice, something like that would be in Hope Mills, but right now, we don't know a space that we could do that, but the gentleman did say that we could use that building on Main Street. And we did miss the deadline for our public, public art sculptures in Hope Mills through the Arts Council. I don't know if there's another route that we can do, but we certainly have missed that deadline, and on tomorrow, the Arts Council is hosting a Arts Breakfast with, um, the elected business people in the community. I'll be there, talking about jobs, revenue, and vibrancy in communities, and I do tell them that I will report back what I learned at that breakfast on tomorrow, and, um, will you be there? Okay. I will be there as well, and they wanted to know if we could change the time of the meeting from six to six-thirty to, uh, accommodate some of the members. I don't know if we need to meet the next time and, uh, vote on it, or what we need to do to change the time.
Um, so you guys actually set the time, set the time when you created the board, so I believe that will be for you to be able to change, and, um, just also keep in mind that if four of you show up to one place, you might be violating the quorum, and so I have not noticed this, because I don't, I didn't know anything about it.
I will note, as long as y'all are not engaged in discussion, it's not a problem for you all to be in the same place at the same time. We generally do a notice of, of possible quorum just to cover, you know, so that there's no, you know, poor transparency, but y'all are allowed to be in the same place at the same time, as long as you're not discussing town business. Once you start discussing town business as a forum, that's a meeting you can't do.
Commissioner Bell, I mean, Mayor Bellflower and Commissioner Grayber don't engage with me, uh, in the town business tomorrow morning. That's all that I have, thank you.
Very good, very good. Mayor Grayber, note, tomorrow morning, we'll be listening to the Morning of Insights about jobs, revenue, and vibrancy in Cumberland County. It's gonna be a presentation based on survey results, so it's really not gonna be much dialogue, it's just gonna be more listening and, and takeaway from the survey at the Arts Council. Uh, Mayor's Coalition, the next meeting is May third, it's at Eastover. I would like to say that, that actually our town clerk, Ashley Wyatt, has published on our town website all of the minutes and the agendas for past Mayor's Coalition. Uh, it's something out of transparency that we started doing months ago, and, uh, so I just wanted to share that, make sure everybody knew that if you wanted to know what goes on at the Mayor's Coalition, it's all quarterly at different municipalities, and a lot of times, those agendas are not published, but I wanted to make sure that they are published and the minutes are provided on our town website, and they are. Okay. Okay.
I have an alibi. So this coming Wednesday, 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 April seventeenth, from ten thirty AM, um, just till eleven thirty AM, so, uh, there will actually be a car show at the, um, Southview High School. Um, it'll be at the Southview High School parking lot called Cars and Crowns. Um, yeah, I don't have, the flyer that I was sent was very limited in information, but, um, I had to dust off the Jeep and maybe I'll be out there, but I know it starts at ten thirty, so at the Southview High School parking lot, Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Our last item is monthly reports, that's under cap ten, and the agenda packet. And then we have reminders, uh, April twentieth is Ludders Week, household hazard waste, and the Shred Event starts at nine on April twentieth. Then on April twenty-second is the Parks and Rec Committee meeting at the chapel. April twenty-third is the Appearance Commission meeting, that's at Parks and Rec. Uh, the Parks and Rec Committee meeting starts at six-thirty at the chapel. The Appearance Commission meeting is at Parks and Rec, it starts at six-thirty. And then on April twenty-seventh, back by popular demand, is the countywide community yard sale starting at ten. This event continues to grow more and more every year, as more and more people take advantage of, of yard sales, and they put their, uh, their notices out for a map of the Hopeless community, so that's distributed so people can see it. Last item, uh, not yet, almost, we're close. Staff comments? Not permitted.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, good. Rhonda, you got anything? Anybody on the back wall got any comments? Leanna wants you to know, welcome to the family. We know, we, we welcome you, and we welcome your husband too, Ben, who works at FTC, he's a biology instructor, works for, works on the biology department. Yes. I did not know that until you told me. I did not know until you told me, but, again, and your family lives in Hope Mills.
I'd like all of us to, uh, remember the family of Patsy Tims. Patsy is a lifelong resident of Hope Mills, graduated from Hope Mills High School, went on to UNC Chapelville, um, to get an education degree, taught for twenty-five years here in town. Um, she was instrumental in getting the Amshals here in Hope Mills. She passed away this past weekend. Her funeral will be tomorrow at two o'clock at, uh, Highland Presbyterian Church at Thistle, and her husband, I don't know if y'all remember any of the Newfield temps, he was on the original board that built the second mine of the golf course back in nineteen sixty-nine, so at, at one time he was on the professional drug company there, Bordeaux. So please keep their family in your mind of prayers, if you will.
Commissioner Grayber. Y'all understand comments? Okay, coming back to the board.
I know. Oh, no, I have my notes on here, humble apologies. So coming up next week, myself, Mayor Proten, you, Commissioner Legg, and also our town manager, we will be at Winsome Salon for the twenty-twenty-four City Vision, um, convention. Yes. And remarks complete.
All right. So we've come to the end of our meeting tonight. Our next meeting is scheduled for May sixth, and we have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor? We're done for the night. Thank you very much for coming.